Board and County Commissioner down session. We have Commissioner Jones say the prayer, please.
Father, we thank you today for this day that you've given unto all of us. We ask today that as we go through this day that you be with us not only here at this boardroom today, but the rest of our day. Father, thank you for the day you've given us here in Franklin County. Help us to make decisions and differences for our future here today, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Approve of minutes? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payment of the county bills?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Public comments.
Good morning. My name is Jim McCloy. I reside at, I don't reside, I own property at fourteen thirty-nine Alligator Point, uh, thirteen, fourteen thirty-nine Alligator Drive in Alligator Point, Florida. And like, I'd like to make a few comments about an issue that is on your agenda today, the annexation of Alligator Point, Ballpoint to Waukulla County. Uh, I, first of all, before I get to that, let me also address another item that's on your agenda. That's the repair of Alligator Drive. We are very encouraged that between your efforts and the efforts of the state of Florida, you have assigned a consultant to coordinate the repair of the road. Because some of our frustration is, some of our frustration, not all of it, has been over the repair of the road over the last two and a half years. But to annexation, you probably saw the ad in the Tallahassee Democrat recently, full-page ad, that was entitled Franklin County's Forgotten Citizens. A Tale of Broken Promises and Abandonment by Government. And it goes on and on and on about a lot of frustrated people over at Alligator Point about the, uh, lack of response from Franklin County government to repair the road. I am not here, and I'm, I did not start this process of annexation solely because of the road. There has been a lot of negative comments made about us by the commission in the past. There's been a lot of negative comments made about the commission by some of our citizens in the past. The, that ad that I just referenced, the very last line talked about the blame for the irresponsiveness by Franklin County government is an inept, inept county commission. I don't subscribe to that. I did not sign that letter. But as a homeowner, I am frustrated. I have been in a number of meetings for the last seven years over at Alligator Point, and the tenor of the meetings has been how can we solve our problems at Alligator Point? And how can we, as citizens, pay for it? Because the message we have clearly gotten over the last seven years from Franklin County government is we don't have any money. We don't have any more assets to give you. You have to figure it out. We had a Ballpoint trust fund, and while you did a very good job of handling it over the last twenty years, it is now gone. It's a fact that folks are very frustrated with Franklin County government. I said I didn't subscribe to the ineptitude, but I will subscribe to the fact that, that you do, this county does have very limited act, uh, assets. You have very few deputies for the area the size of this county. You have only three ambulances from Weems for the length geographic area for this county. You have, you know way better than I do that you have very limited resources in a huge geographic area. We feel isolated. We feel like, if some of us understand your frustrations in trying to deliver services to such a great big area with limited financial resources. So I took it upon myself as a homeowner, as a property owner, to approach the Florida Legislature to find out what it would legally take to get us, uh, move to Waukulla County. And finding that that was simply filing, somebody filing a bill and passing it through the Legislature, then I proceeded to go to Waukulla County and talk to them about would they even entertain the idea. Then I talked to Senator Monford, and I talked to Senator, I mean Representative Bashir's to pursue the idea if, can we do this? I believe it can be done, and I believe that notwithstanding the frustrations of homeowners, property owners in Alligator Point, I believe, gentlemen, this is an opportunity for you to be able to better serve your constituents in Franklin County. Because you, you have, I just said, and I realize you have limited resources. I realize that Alligator Point is way on the eastern end of the county, and you, you have to send deputies over there, you have to send your road department over there, you have to, it's a long way over there, and you have limited resources. Well, here's a chance where somebody is willing to take our, the burden of delivering services to us away from you so you can take those resources and provide them to the citizens you represent.
All right, three minutes is up.
All right, thank you.
Any more public comments? Any more public comments? Department heads, Howard neighbors, Ray department.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing? Hope y'all had a good Christmas and a happy new year. Most of our crew's been off, but you know, everybody's back now, so we've got a lot of garbage scattered up and down the roads, and so we'll be doing cleaning up and trying to fix some of the worst roads just through the county from all the rain. So, and got a lot more rain coming this weekend, so, a lot of, lot of flooding.
Anybody have anything for Howard?
Howard, good morning and happy new year.
You too, man.
Appreciate you guys. There are three issues I'd like to be considered. In that great job that you guys did on Hefferton Drive to put that culvert back in place. It's still stable. The big rains have eroded to each end of them again. And I'm wondering, when your crew has that time, when they're on their way to something else, to stop by and perhaps evaluate it, backfill it? Tack it down?
Yes, sir. We'll do that, probably sandbag it, probably, you know, a lot of issues you got. Some places it washes out, some places it don't, we probably need to be sandbag.
Very good.
But we'll do that.
Okay. Also, on the east end of Gulf Shore Boulevard, there is the barricades that have been dislodged, and they are now, I think, non-functional, but you guys have, or somebody has put large piles of sand there.
Okay.
And they appear to be a gateway for people now to use that area as a beach. But it's been, I've been made aware that there's been liquor bottles and all kinds of inappropriate things left there. Is it possible from a safety standpoint and an advisory standpoint to put some do not park and give the reader the option of going to the public beaches that we have?
Okay.
And also some reflectors to keep them from, you know, hitting that sand and doing that type of thing?
Yeah, we probably need to put some of them concrete bunkers that we got there and then, you know, mark it good where you can see it.
Get them back in with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'd be great. And then, you know, make them showy so that people hit them and get, folks advise them that there's a beach elsewhere.
Okay.
That was talked with me.
We could do.
Also, we had an accident this weekend, I believe, right on our dirt road there at Alligator Point.
Eleven hundred foot?
Eleven hundred foot, now two thousand feet or more. And apparently, some, if I understand it right, folks negotiated that turn right by the firehouse, and there was, there was a tragedy there.
Okay.
I'm made aware that that turn area there is a one-lane road. Could it be considered, since I understand there's a road bed there, to widen that area and make it a two-lane? And just wonder if you could evaluate that from a safety standpoint.
We can widen it, or, you know, if not, we could, you know, close it off and let them make the loop until it is fixed.
Okay. All right. Just, just so we're aware of those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody got anything for Howard? Thank you, Howard.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a good one.
You have a good one. Find the David Solid Waste?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Couple things FYI. Ball fields, we getting ready to get started on them. We have some damage from the storms at all fields. The one here in Appalachia, D.W. Wilson, is most severe, and we have quotes on fencing and lighting. If the weather permit, we will get started on resetting poles, light poles, and just waiting on the fence. But again, if the weather permit this week, we will be starting on the lights, just, just to let you know. And debris contractors, talked with them this morning, they headed back to Franklin County, they should wrap it up by Friday. They'll be out of here.
That one, how we ninety-eight? Ninety-eight?
Uh, no, sure, that's through the county.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, I did talk to one of the local contractor, did not talk to Ferrovia, but one of the contractors for the state, they, they say they're finished.
Oh, they're finished?
Yes.
Okay.
They're, they're finished, but there's a big footprint left everywhere.
Okay, well Pam is saying no, but I, I talked to, okay, I talked to, like I said, I have not talked with Ferrovia themselves, but just one of the contractors. So maybe they're finished and not the state as a whole. And that's it. That's all I have for you.
I got anything for Fonda?
Thank you, Fonda.
Just to follow up on the Commission, I did talk to Ferrovia when you asked me to, Commissioner Parrish, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bolt, about the, I forget the term we used, the trash that would be there afterwards, you know? And they said they will be back to pick up everything else, that's on ninety-eight. So, um, so like, maybe that contractor works, but I think they still have more work to do on ninety-eight.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
And we got a letter, I think, didn't we, Michael, from the state saying that though they're picking up material on the state highways, by the way, they've also reached out and done some of our county roads as well.
I believe that is correct, Commissioner. That came in just shortly before Christmas.
The clerk, Madam Johnson, you have anything?
I don't have a report.
Ms. Brown?
It's me. It's okay.
Ms. Brown, now?
The letter I got from the state says last pass will be the twentieth, or, yeah. And as far as our county roads, what they're talking about is our contractors. Because they assume those contracts, so actually, the county's contractors are actually their contractors. We're just not, we don't pick up ninety-eight. They have their own contractors for that. Yeah. So, uh, even though we set our date, their final date was gonna be the twentieth. So they're not done yet. So they'll, I'm assuming make another pass either way, then it'll be left to Benny and them to pick up afterwards.
So they gonna come back and pick it all up out of the ditches?
And what she said was, uh, final pass would be the twentieth of this month, is what I got from FDOT. Now, we'll see, but, um, that's the last word I got from them on that.
Real, real quick, all this, uh, brought in with the storm surge, it's over off of Highway ninety-eight, uh, I guess you would call it the state of right-of-way. What's gonna happen with all that? It's, it looks like pure crap has washed across the right-of-way Highway ninety-eight and owned the private property, all kind of debris and stuff everywhere. What, what's the solution to all of that?
All that, that's right.
I was gonna say, 'cause that's private property. I don't know what the roads are.
Yeah, I mean, I understand it's private property, but it looks like.
It looks like.
It came from the states.
It's pure trash, but I mean, who's gonna go out there and cross over the right-of-way and get the stuff up? Is it, is private property owners responsibility? I mean, how's that eventually gonna be cleaned up? I was just wondering.
I'll find out from the state.
Because there's some areas where that storm surge come across the road that is just.
I know, there's, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at stuff. I mean, I've seen whole roofs over there, and I'm like, mm.
And it wasn't the fault of the private property owner, but it's still, it's a heck of a mess there.
Mm-hmm.
From paper to trash to parts of buildings, out, out, you know, stored sheds, all kind of stuff washed across the road.
About rental land, it's bad out there.
Well, that's kinda what I'm referring to.
Some of that state property, some of the church, the Mormon church, they own a lot of that land there, too.
I know, a lot of this out here west of Appalachia Cola, uh, it's washed up against people's fence, which would be the private property, but it didn't go on private property because they had a fence there. Who's gonna pick up all that stuff and get all this debris out of these ditches? There were the ditches out, fallen ditches that fall out from that area into the bay. I mean, we don't want all that trash out there, so.
I would think that would fall on the responsibility of the state. That's their highway.
I mean, I didn't know if they need prisoners out there to raid and pick this stuff up, but I mean, I don't know what the solution is, but.
Michael, we can talk to Renee at FDOT and see how they're gonna handle that. We can just, we can ask, and then that gives us what their stance is gonna be.
Monte, if you contact Renee, I'll contact Ferrovia directly.
Okay, all right, we'll do that. I'll talk to Renee today.
You know, to complement your concern, perhaps this is one of those issues where you ask, what can you do for the county in terms of the citizens? Perhaps after the final cleanup and everything is officiated, maybe there can be a citizens' cleanup day for saving areas, not roofs and big pieces, but all those other things that perhaps can be something that we could look at.
They have like a coastal cleanup day, I think, just like they have a river cleanup day in the adult miles, but we can check and see. But that's probably what it's gonna come down to, is volunteers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Pam, you may want to bring the board up to date on the, the timing issue of, for the beginning of the state payment for the pickup. Because we've got a memorandum that gives us one date, then you've got a senior staff person at DOT who's telling us, they're telling you it's a later date than what's in the state memorandum in correspondence. But may I just want to make sure we get that on the record and the board's aware of it.
Um, our MOU started with the state. Um, we got it on the fourteenth. Um, of course, had come front of y'all, which was following Tuesday, which made it sixteenth? Yeah. Because I got it that Sunday night, late that Sunday night. Um, after it came in front of y'all, y'all voted to accept it. Michael and I got with the state and worked out everything. So it was actually the eighteenth before we got it in? Yeah. Got it actually into Web E O C. So now the state's coming back and saying that, that, uh, them and the feds decided the eighteenth would be our start date. That's incorrect. The MOU plainly states they assume it on the fourteenth. Now, I've gotten some information from other counties that it looks like they're working with them to give them their, uh, retro back dates. So I've contacted, um, the state person that was handling that for Liberty County and asked them what we can do to do ours. Uh, when FEMA was here, I spoke to FEMA, our liaison, and he said, he didn't care what, um, FDOT said, that FEMA would not be involved in setting that date. That would be a state issue only, not a federal issue. So, somewhere there's disconnect here.
Well, I'm not sure it's entirely accurate to say that the state has made a decision that it's the eighteenth as, as far as the beginning point for payment. It's just, we won't call their name, but it's a person that's in the chain of command of communication with DOT has sent Pam emails that Pam has forwarded to me saying it's the eighteenth. All the written correspondence I have from the general counsel's office says the effective date for payment is the fourteenth. So Pam's working with her staff person, I'm working with the DOT general counsel, telling them, you two need to get together and figure out what date is the accurate date so we can let our county commissioners know. And obviously, if they come back and say it's the eighteenth instead of the fourteenth, it's only four days, but that, that could be as much as what, what Pam, forty, fifty thousand dollars?
Uh, it's forty thousand off a Tetra tag, which we can file for reimbursement on that. But again, it won't be a hundred percent. It'll just be the seventy-five and then the twenty-five portion. And then we'd have two days, I think, from Crabber Guff, and I don't know what that, what that is, but they didn't pick up very many loads, from what I understand.
And we're not asking the board to take any action necessarily, just want, we just want to make sure that the board got an official report and knew, knew what the dialogue was between, you know, staff, your attorney, and DOT.
So they say in these four days that we're supposed to file, but for FEMA to reimburse us for those four days?
That's.
If, if in fact that, the eighteenth becomes the official DOT pickup date for the beginning of DOT responsibility for the cleanup, then yes, we would have to pay for that pickup and then apply to FEMA for reimbursement for the forty thousand dollars plus for that four-day period. But we, we're getting contradictory statements from DOT. You've got DOT general counsel's telling me in writing, the commencement date is the fourteenth of October. Pam's getting emails from like a staff person in DOT, I guess at the district office, is that where she's located?
Mm-hmm.
That's the eighteenth, that they've decided the eighteenth is the date. So there's some internal disconnect within DOT as to what the official start date is for DOT financial responsibility to begin. So, just want to make the board aware of it.
We don't want that to backfire on us and miss a deadline where we don't get reimbursed, and I'm glad you have the paperwork to keep us current on that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's sort of seems illogical that the state of Florida, they ran here and made this presentation, they're gonna come and help us, that they wouldn't then start from the day one of help, which is, it was October fourteenth, not some four days later. So I'm hoping that somehow, they, they indicated every, every way that I've seen that they were here to help pick up, starting at the day after storm. That's.
I can't imagine DOT general counsel signed a letter and sent it to me as the county attorney, saying October fourteenth is the date unless he had his client's permission to send the letter. That's my belief, but, again, you said logic, I'm not sure. So we'll see. We're, we're hoping for the fourteenth, we just want the board to be aware.
Anything else?
Um, no, so we're working on pulling all the paperwork we need together to get our project worksheets started on. Uh, we had our kickoff date set for the thirtieth, and then Monday FEMA called me and they want to, they wanted to move it up, so I'm waiting to hear back if they'll accept the fifteenth, which was the original date I requested it for. So I hadn't had a chance to check my emails this morning, so hopefully they'll move it up to the fifteenth, and then that, we can get started, and that starts the clock to ticking.
Okay. Anybody got anything?
Fifteen, you have sixty days after that to get our.
Yeah, yep.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Pam, the, I, I seen the email about the meeting you're gonna have this coming Monday. Is that something that?
Long-term recovery meeting.
Is that something that we need to move forward?
That's on the fire. That's on the fire. We did, uh, that's for us to try to meet with Deborah and our ESF fifteen and figure out where we are on, um, that grant and where we go from there, and who she's qualified and who she at, and, because they're calling our office constantly, wanting to know about the grant. And all we can do is tell them, you have to talk to Deborah Boucher. We, we don't, it's out of our hands from here. And then they come up and, well, you've got that money. Well, that money, again, that's sitting there is to help the folks that don't qualify for the grant, but she hasn't given us any information on who's not gonna qualify for that grant. So we can go ahead and turn, get them a home to live in. So that's what that meeting is, to decide what, what you're gonna do from here.
Okay. Well, I know y'all already had like an after-action report a couple weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
Could, after that meeting, can we at least get a report of what's going on and what's been said, so we'll, so we'll know if people ask us?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And Trey should be getting the after-action report typed up, and y'all get a copy of that.
Okay.
Anybody else got anything for Pam? Thank you, Pam. Eric Love Strand?
Commissioner, Eric had a, a meeting, a UF meeting, so unfortunately, he came this morning and let us know he had to be there at nine, so he was unable to have this meeting.
Okay.
And since, if, if I may, Commissioners, since that's all your department heads, the clerk is ready to, she doesn't have a meeting. I have a very short report that I could do my report, and then you go to Alan, because I suspect his report is longer, a lot more words, and will create a lot more discussion.
Okay.
And I don't know about Attorney Schuler, what type of report he has for this morning.
No report.
He might wanna go, not, no report?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Oh, so, yeah, so, uh, Attorney and I'll go before Alan, we'll save Alan for last, save the best for last. So if you would, my report, item number one, I, there are two TDC items, one for board action, the other for information. Item A, the past years, TDC administration contract and the East Point Visitor Centers contract were approved at the same time. However, when the TDC administration contract was approved in December twenty eighteen for the new administrator for twenty nineteen, the East Point Visitor Center contract was not. Board action to approve the East Point Visitor Center contract contingent an Attorney Schuler's review.
So moved.
Say it.
I'm second, motion of the second floor, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, previously, the board approved a contract for the Appalachia Cola Visitor Center. Upon further review, there was wording in that contract, that Visitor Center contract, that referred to St. George Island Visitor Center. That verbiage has been corrected, and all wording in that contract refers to the Appalachia Cola Visitor Center. I just needed that to be part of the record that we, we corrected that mistake. If I may, item number two, the Florida Association of Counties has scheduled three core certified county commission workshops in Alachua County from January seventh to the tenth, which includes new commissioner workshops, a county government structure and authority course, and a county government roles and responsibilities course. Commissioner Jones missed the opportunity to complete the required courses to become a certified county commissioner because he stayed in the county during the East Point Lime Rock Fire Event instead of attending the conference where the courses were being offered. Therefore, he would like to attend a workshop on January tenth to receive the necessary credits. Board action to authorize traveling expenses for Commissioner Jones to attend the January tenth FAC Certified County Commissioner course.
Mike, let me ask you real quick. Commissioner Bolt, are you going to try to attend this one with this stuff?
No, I'm gonna wait until the actual summer conference and bundle it all together at the same address.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Second. Got a motion of the second floor, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item three, inform the board, the Centennial Bank has contacted Commissioner Massey and expressed interest in providing financing for the new Weems facility and the purchase of a bigger building for the supervisor of election office. Board action to authorize staff to negotiate loan terms with Centennial Bank for both loans. The board will have the opportunity to compare both Centennial and USDA terms for each loan before making a final decision. One of the disadvantages I see with Centennial is that they can't offer to grant any of the loan that USDA can. However, with the government shutdown, I can't talk to USDA right now, so that slows down that process even more, so.
Michael, real quick.
Sir?
Uh, if you use USDA, then, then you use a local bank that would do like quota construction loan when you're building a house?
Mm-hmm.
And then they're paid for that, and then that transfers over to a USDA loan, so they will be involved regardless. But I don't see how they're gonna be able to offer the same interest rates as USDA. I just don't see that happening.
Okay.
I will make a motion for you to go ahead and negotiate, or whatever it is you're calling it, but I don't see no way that they gonna meet USDA loan. They just, they don't loan money at that kind of interest rate. But you can check it out, but either way, they're gonna be involved, or I assume they'll be involved, a local bank will be involved, because you do the construction loan, that's why USDA does it. Now, you have to meet all those USDA requirements, and you have to be on point, because if you miss one little thing, then you gotta hiccup in the reimbursement schedule.
For USDA.
For reimbursing the bank or the lender that, that makes the construction loan.
Okay.
I don't think they gonna meet USDA, uh, interest rates. I mean, I just don't.
Well, I don't either. And the other thing is that, I mean, I don't see how you, you're gonna have a hard time comparing apples to apples, because the USDA had indicated there might be a grant component, at least on the, on the other thing. So how, we, we don't, we don't know any of the details yet, so if Centennial's gonna give us a, you know, a percentage rate based upon a loan, then maybe we won't need that much loan, maybe we're gonna get some sort of grant. So I think, in a way, I think it's premature. We ought to see what the USDA numbers are first, to me, I mean, because then we'll know how much we're gonna borrow. We don't know if we're borrowing at all, or we're getting a grant for part of it, we don't know.
I, I've never known a bank to meet USDA interest, that's a low, very low interest rate. I mean, but some lender will be involved because they have to.
Constructional.
Constructional, so.
Commissioners, also, I mean, I think we're premature, because we haven't decided on that building yet. Y'all, if I remember right, the motion was to, to look into it, get some pictures and facts, and, I mean, there may be another building that's cheaper, or there may be I mean, there may be another building that's cheaper, or there may be another option that y'all haven't talked about yet. And with, I'm just gonna say, you know, with Hurricane Michael, we don't know what money you're gonna have to come up with this year. You may not have money to build it, to buy a building.
It's not gonna be good. So we're not gonna get this million dollars that we had in reserves, we're not gonna get all that back.
No.
That's not happening, because they don't reimburse it seventy-five percent, so I, and you don't know what the tax base is gonna be, because we got thirty-four million dollars now that we can't tax, according to the property appraiser. Now, Triumph's supposed to make that up. Will they? Have they? We don't know. There's a lot of different things that, you know, I don't know what land values are gonna do after the hurricane. I know what happened after Hurricane Andrew, everything went to the tanker. And just to maintain the same amount of money that you generated last year, where does the millage rate go? I, for one commissioner, do not want to be like some of our other municipalities here in the county, and have people talking about me, because county government now, millage rate's up to the roof, and you're sitting here broke and you can't do anything. I don't wanna be part of that game either. So there's a lot going on this next budget year.
Yeah, and talking to the finance department, I mean, they're worried about it. I mean, yeah, the state is doing some of the cleanup, but we're still paying out overtime to all our staff. That's not covered by anything, and hopefully we'll get reimbursed, but it might be two years. All our buildings, all the deductibles, we don't even know what we're gonna have to pay, as far as deductibles for all the county properties that we're having to work on still. So I would just say, you know, to me, this building thing needs to be put off with the supervisor till we get a better picture of where we're at with your budget. But that, you know, it's y'all's decision, but I think going out and trying to figure out a loan is premature today, 'cause I don't think y'all decided on a building yet.
Maybe just that if we did buy something, maybe we just want to have the chance to do it.
Yeah.
I told them we probably wasn't, didn't know if we'd buy nothing or what we was gonna do. They just said if we did, they'd like to have a chance at it.
I withdraw my motion.
And again, with the federal government shutdown, there's no conversation to be had with USDA, for me to bring you back any numbers or how much of a grant it'll be, I just, I just don't have it, you know?
I thought it's interesting that a bank approached us. When you talk about doing business, it's usually the other way around.
Well, if the number's big enough, they'll come looking for you.
Say again?
If the number's big enough, they'll come looking for you.
Uh huh. You know, there's comparisons and contrasts, and we have an opportunity here for our county.
Yeah, I've had people from Centennial Bank approach me too, obsess about Commissioner Pierce in between the construction loan part of it. Like, hey, look, we know you're gonna have to do construction loan, please consider us. So, yeah, that conversation's definitely happening.
So I'll just contact them and let them know, when we get further down the road, then we'll decide if we're gonna have discussions with them.
Yeah, 'cause that's an old building down there.
Yeah, it is.
But, you know, also, I wanna be real sensitive about what Ms. Johnson has said about, we don't know what we're looking at here. And we really need to make sure we have Sentinel, financial Sentinels in some way in our system. For instance, I know our property appraiser has probably got some of the best information about potential property value relative to our planning for our millage rate. And we ought to be thinking about those strategies right now with Sentinels out there in some way, so we're not surprised. Very important.
Yeah, and of course, Ms. Rivers here, for one issue, but she and I are talking forward, and she's certainly gonna give you more specific details, that by the end of January, she would have a preliminary idea what the tax roll will be for next year. So that's sort of the timeline we're looking at. 'Cause based on that number, we would then go to Triumph and see how they are gonna respond. 'Cause right now Triumph had said, well, you heard the board member here, but there are no details, and when I went to the last Triumph board meeting, they didn't even talk about it. So they made a public statement they're gonna do something, but then there's been no discussions from that point on. So we have a lot of unknowns.
And also to add to that, Alan, isn't Mr. Sheriff off of that board now, since he's put his hat in the ring to run for the house?
It's my understanding that he is not taking, that he's still on the board.
Okay.
That's interesting.
Excuse me, number four, if I may, finish for three. As an update, the Fire Link and Fire Net systems are functioning well, but the temporary radios as William communication waits for the arrival of the new equipment. Voice testing with East Point, Appalachia Cola, St. George Island, and Alligator Point, St. Teresa fire departments have been, have went extremely well. The required FCC justification letter on the sheriff's department letterhead is needed to complete the FCC license application. We're still awaiting, we're still waiting for the tower report to determine what repairs will be needed for the Fire Net Tower. One of the reasons I gave you this update, besides just letting you know where we are, is that we're also gonna take this money and make an application to Triumph for the communication.
Yes.
So I'm waiting, we're still working on gathering all these invoices and what the final cost of this actually is. And then we'll turn that into an application for Triumph for funding.
I'm gonna ask a question if I may.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Massey. And if it is, it is. Why are they needing a letter on the sheriff's letterhead if the county's the one paying for it?
Well, I was thinking the same thing. I was gonna ask Tal after this meeting as to why, it'd be a lot quicker, we can get it, I can get it done for him today.
And also, since, I'm sorry, I'm trying to cut you off, but since we're talking about doing the thing that you just mentioned to get funding to help, I don't want it to be circumvented by not even an I- letterhead that's on it.
Yeah. The only reason, justification I could see, Commissioner, with that, is that the nine-one-one dispatch system is at the sheriff's department, but it, you know, I'll find out from Tal and let the board know.
Yeah, but they've also clarified and said this wasn't their baby from the beginning.
True that.
So they can't have one and then have the other.
Okay.
That don't work for me.
Okay. I'll find out about the licenser. Sheriff's letterhead. And finally, at your December eighteenth meeting, I explained that there was an ADA compliance issue with the county's website. The board authorized 2K Web Group, the county's website's vendor, to run a report of the county's fifteen hundred and eleven webpages on the site to determine how pages, what pages are out of compliance, that should be, with software and training, which was also approved by the board, all future uploaded PDF documents will be compliant. During that same meeting, we discussed compliance issues with documents already on the website. I met with 2K Web Group to discuss the county's options regarding these non-compliant documents and forwarded that information to Attorney Shuler, who is currently researching this matter. I will keep the board updated on this project as we move on. And that's my report.
Anybody got anything for Michael?
Good, all right.
All right, thank you.
Happy New Year, Commissioner.
Mr. Pierce?
Okay. First item of my report is provide the board of the company of a profile of a proposed emergency beach berm for Alligator Drive that I provided, the FCMC consultants, those are the ones who work on Alligator Point for us, the state of Florida's hired them. Using the profile recommended by our engineers, and these are numbers that I have not confirmed with Clay Kennedy, so if Clay, my math is way off, then you at some point will tell me. But based on my mathematical skills, this is what I count with. So using the profile recommended by engineers, a berm thirteen hundred feet long, which is what I estimate it'd be about, it will cost about two hundred and forty thousand dollars for initial creation. There would be maintenance and monitoring costs in addition, and we consider this beach berm as temporary emergency work to protect the road, but I will defer to FCMC as to how it should be submitted to FEMA. A contract would have to be employed to build this berm as the volume of sand needed, some four hundred truckloads is more than the county can haul. And what I've attached is a copy of the FEMA-approved profile generated by our MRD, our coastal engineers. And I'd really give it to you for two reasons. One, just so you can see that it's a fairly large berm, but you can also see on that darker line, how the shoreline just got pushed back. It's sort of interesting, how the weight, basically the weight of the water and the action has just flattened that Alligator Point and other beach profiles, so you can use this as a extrapolation of what happened on St. George Island also. It just took a nice vertical dune system, and the weight of the water just pushed it over. And that's what happened on Alligator Point. So as you can see, we lost about three feet of elevation on the road, which I'd mentioned earlier, but this documents that. So it's just the beach profile out there, we're just closer to the water than we used to be. I've sent it off to FCMC, I've not heard back. I did it on Monday, and I have not heard back from them, 'cause yesterday was a holiday. So hopefully in a few days, we'll hear what they think about this and how we need to proceed with this. But we need to do something, 'cause the road out there is, I understand over the weekend, you know, they were down there again over time, trying to fix the road, you know, constantly. The traffic light, I'll say this, people, we've been having some people tamper with the traffic light down there. Well, someone is unplugging the generator. The battery, the solar powered power for the traffic lights wasn't properly working, so the contractor who owns the resorts for the traffic lights went down, they had a generator. Somehow, for some reason, maybe it's making too much noise, or whatever, somebody unplugged the generator or turned it off. Therefore, the traffic light wasn't working for a period of time over the weekend. I'm sorry, we're doing the best we can to provide traffic safety control, and that's what we have to do. And so if someone's tampering with public equipment and someone gets hurt down there, we're gonna be looking for somebody to be responsible.
Well, there was one person that emailed us complaining about the noise of the generator.
Yes, yes. I'm aware of that.
So, I mean, I don't know, well, it's been cloudy now for three days, so I'm sure it's over, it's not working. And we're looking at more rain tomorrow, and solar ain't gonna work tomorrow either, probably, 'cause it ain't gonna be charged up with all the clouds we've had over the last three days. So without a generator, the light don't function.
That has been the problem in the past. Now, I will say, Howard, Lori actually contacted me, I forget what day it was, and she got ahold of Howard, so the problem may have been solved, but at one point, there was a period of time when the traffic light was not working, because it appeared that someone had gone down there and turned off the generator.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Has a police report been filed with the sheriff's department?
I'm not aware.
Well, we need to file a report and ask the patrol down there. Be my recommendation for them. It is, as you pointed out, a life safety issue.
And actually, the thing is, is that it's the sheriff's department that contacts Howard, and he contacts me to call the technician.
Okay, so the sheriff may have done an internal report there.
So I just need to let her know to tell exactly if we, I guess we're gonna file a report.
File a report and request, but I think that requires board action.
Oh.
I don't think, so I would recommend board action to file a police report and request that the sheriff patrol down there to make sure that vandalism does not continue.
I'd make a motion of that, but I also, I'd like to add that maybe he put a camera on those two stoplights, and we'll find out who's been fooling with it. And then they will bear responsibility if there's another accident at Alligator Point because the traffic lights are not working. I understand the noise is a problem, but when you're talking about safety-related issues, put a camera on, let's see who's messing with it.
Have a motion on the floor, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, let me go to the second item, just to let you know. So I received an email from John Murphy this morning, he's the fire chief of Alligator Point Fire Department. He just wanted the board to know that they are moving forward with applying additional property down there at Alligator Point for their fire station, and he just wanted the board to know that they are moving forward with their acquisitions, trying to improve fire service down there. All right, so the main issue that I have for you this morning is item number two. Right before the Christmas holidays, Commissioner Pierce received a phone call from Senator Monford regarding the annexation, the potential annexation of Alligator Point into Willco County. As I understand it, Senator Monford said he would sponsor a bill if Frank County wanted this to happen. As this was the item that needed some background research, Michael Marone asked me to provide an analysis. In generating this analysis, I've spoken to Dave Edwards, Willco County Administrator, Jim McFloy, and I apologize for leaving out the L, but apparently I'll always do that somehow, I think your name is McCoy, APTA president who made the motion at the APTA meeting for this idea, Ms. Rhonda Skipper, Frank County Property Appraiser, and the supervisor of elections office. Ms. Skipper is in attendance this morning to answer any additional questions. The initial action by APTA did not describe a boundary for the annexation, so Mr. McFloy and I agreed on the proposed boundary. The boundary should follow some well-established landmark. The landmark could shift if the board so choose to move it, but the current proposed boundary, that Mr. McFloy and I came up with, I came up with and he's agreed to it, includes the tax-paying area that Ms. McFloy felt that needed to be included, as well as the non-taxpaying ballpoint area, because I was trying to find a definitive boundary, and some vacant land taxed at ag rate. And you all have in your map, in your packet there, the boundary line, it's everything east of US ninety-eight there, you know, eastern end of Franklin County. Now, I bring this up this morning, not because I expect there has to be board action, but because Commissioner Pierce, based on what I know, that Senator Monford wanted board discussion. So the only way to get board discussion is to bring it up. But where, and how far this has to go today, I will defer to you all and those of you who have spoken to Mr. Monford, Senator Monford. Ms. Skipper's at the podium right now. I don't necessarily need to read all the facts and figures that I provided you all, I'll be glad to go through with you all, it's public record, and it's two pages of stuff, so I will turn it over to the board or Ms. Skipper now to, rather than me continuing to read all these.
Now, let me correct something you said, though.
Okay.
The senator called me, wanted to know how the board and county commissioners felt about this issue. I could not tell him, because he called me on Wednesday after the Tuesday board meeting. But there does have to be a decision by this board, what we wanna do, because he's expecting me to call him. The legislative session is not too far away from beginning. So we can't sit here and go for a month or two and then figure out what we wanna do. We need to know how the board feels about this, and he needs to be, we'll deal with a letter or whatever, on the comments from the board, but, you know, he does want to know how the board feels before he proceeds. So, you know, my comments on a lot of this stuff that you got on here are, you know, if you're gonna lose five percent of your tax base, that's something else that the commission needs to consider when we're discussing this, along with the issues that me and the clerk just provided for you as far as where we're going in next year's budget, as relates to the thirty-four million dollars that we will not be taxing next year, to if we decide to let Willco County annex Alligator Point, that five percent. And I just wanna be on the record again, stating that I, you know, if we let them go, what have you, I'm not here, sitting here telling you I wanna raise the tax base by five percent and increase the millage rate, and end up like some other municipalities in here in the county that's over nine mills, and be responsible for that. I mean, if you listen to what the people tell you outside of this meeting, everybody's raising, saying about the different water fees, sewer fees, we're at nine point nine mills, so on and so on, and you hear all this outside this board meeting, because a lot of people come to me and want me to reduce our water rates. Well, the county don't have nothing to do with that. But I'm hearing what the people are saying. And I don't wanna be a governmental entity that's sitting here with no means of providing for the people should an emergency arise, because you're maxed out in your millage rate. All these things are gonna come to pass in this next budget session. So I just want the commissioners to be aware of the implications of whatever we do, and realize that you're gonna have to deal with it come budget time.
I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications. The numbers that I gave you all are based on my twenty eighteen certified tax roll. My twenty nineteen is still a work in progress, which is where the damage from the hurricane is going to come in. So the loss from the hurricane's not calculated into this estimate that I have given you. And the only saving grace that you guys can keep in the back of your mind, as far as, I know you're concerned about the millage rates rightfully so, is the fact that, the fact that the commission has fallen under the ten percent limitation cap ever since it took effect several years back. So the thirty-four million loss that we have in structured value at this point is not taxable value, it's market value. Taxable value I have to calculate for you later. But the amount that we calculated for you for the loss, possible loss of the Alligator Point revenue is based on taxable value off of a twenty eighteen certified roll. And I have, I have something, I mean, I just, pretty much same thing Alan has, but if you want it, you're welcome to it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Skipper, what's our present millage rate?
Oh, gosh, for the county, I'm not sure. Six point, six point three, I'm thinking six point three oh four oh, something like that, I'm not sure.
What's the millage rate for Willco County?
It's higher than that, I can tell you that.
It's higher than that. To answer the same parallel question, higher than.
Higher.
I have no idea.
David, I'll talk to David, there's several things, I mean, and I'll just make this characterization of the situation. I recognize that people in Alligator Point feel like they're not getting any services, and that Waukulla County may be an option. The difference between Frank County and Waukulla County is, Waukulla County is three times as large, thirty-one thousand people, and Waukulla County, we're about twelve thousand, so three times as large. Waukulla County has, has, in my estimation, in my observation, in, sitting here in Frank County, is that they have reached the threshold of population where they are willing to assess people to fi, provide urban services and things that the communities want. And Alligator Point is dense enough that may be considered an urban area. So Waukulla County assesses for mandatory garbage service, two hundred and fifty dollars a year. Waukulla County assesses for a fire stack, it's two hundred dollars a year. Waukulla County has a seven percent utility surcharge that they tax all utilities. Now, what they do with that money, I don't know, but Waukulla County assesses people for services that they, that the community says they want. They don't have a problem doing that. We don't do that in Frank County. We don't have these kind of assessments, because we live in a rural area and we want people to have as low of a burden of the tax burden that there is. But if, it may be a situation where, where Alligator Point has, is fed up with the circumstances, well, there's ways to generate those kind of revenues, and if you go to Waukulla County, you're gonna pay them. I mean, they've already got those mechanisms in place, there's not gonna be any secret. I mean, that's gonna be much more expensive to be a property owner in Waukulla County if you own Alligator Point.
So you, so you're saying that unlike, if I might mention, so you're saying where we ask people, do they wanna pay for an assessment, you're saying Waukulla County, don't, they just put it on you?
Well, they've done, let me put it this way, I'm sure there's been internal discussions, but as of right now, there's an assessment for mandatory garbage, there's an assessment for fire that's much higher than ours, there's a seven percent utility tax, I mean, now who they ask, I, I'm not gonna say how their democracy works over there, but they have put those assessments in place.
Okay. So you're saying if, so basically, if Alligator Point wanted a road fix, then they liable to put an assessment on it, do that too, and not ask them, just do it?
They're very liable to do that. And that's an issue that we, that, that, look, ladies and gentlemen, this, I, I don't think Waukulla County has any better finances than we are, and I think that they would say if you want a, a, a road that has extraordinary costs, there's gonna be a fee associated with generating those, the, the, the extraordinary costs, and it's gonna come from the people who use the road. I think it's, I mean, I, I'm not, I shouldn't say that because I'm not Waukulla County, but I don't see any other way around it.
According to the commission, they're gonna put that on, like you said, on that, tap it on regardless, and they want the road fixed before they take the road.
Okay, you have more information than I do, but I, you know.
I talked with the commissioner, and the way they, they said they want the road fixed before they took it.
Uh, I, I just wanna say, because it's, because I wanna make sure we, there, there's another group of people who are not in the room here who I think have, would have a large, uh, opinion that would affect how you all act, is that's the school board. The school board right now, there's something, I use in my narrative parity, it's not parity, it's sparsity. It's a funding mechanism that rural counties get, except for Franklin County, and we, we could get the sparsity money for the school board, and it could, it would probably make up the, the lost revenue for the school board, uh, but that's something that Monford would have to put into the legislature if this fact passed, but Frank County is eligible for sparsity funding, but we just don't get it for a variety of reasons. And that sparsity money goes to the school board, it wouldn't come to the county, but go to the school board.
I wondered what the school board's stance would be on this whole scenario, because where our county is covered under that ten percent limitation, which makes a very large difference, pretty much any loss of revenue from losing Alligator Point is gonna come off of the school taxable value.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I did talk to the, to the superintendent's office, I didn't speak to her, and because of the change in legislation last year regarding students, it's, as you all may know, and I didn't realize this, how easy it is nowadays, if you live in one county and you wanna send your kid to another county, no big deal, you just go sign up in the other county. So there isn't, there, at, at this point, there wasn't any known students living in Franklin County, uh, living in Alligator Point, who were now sending those kids all the way over here, so there's not gonna be a big, big change in, in student issues, because most of the students who, however many there are on Alligator Point are already going to Waukulla County. So as far as bus routes and all that kinda stuff, it didn't appear to me there would be any, any change in what, how the school operates, but they would lose money.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, I pulled up your budget on your website, and the millage rate is six point two six seven nine for Franklin this year, which I know is lower than Waukulla's millage rate.
It, it is, my concern is though, losing five percent of your tax base, if property values go down and your millage rate has to go up in order to generate the same amount of money, this is where the gap starts to close on you. It's not that you're doing new things or you're, you know, there's a lot of different things that affect the millage rate and the amount of money that you generate off that millage rate. Uh, along with, I know that, I know we're gonna have to put some of this contingency money back because FEMA's not gonna reimburse all that. So there's a lot of different things that's gonna cause the millage rate to rise, and this storm is out of our control. Other things are in our control, and it's, it's not, you can't change the things that are out of your control, and, and not having this million dollar contingency there, uh, as we heard like last year's budget wanting to cut reserves, cut this, cut that, well, where would we be today if we'd have cut that last year? We'd be begging somebody to try to help us make it through that we did get reimbursed. So I, I'd like to see that mil, that contingency reserve remain at a million dollars. Well, we're not gonna get it all back from FEMA, which means the millage rate has to go up, put that money back. Along with these other issues that we're talking about, and we don't have exact numbers on that, uh, you know, it could, it could be, uh, quite a decision to be made here at the next budget year, and, and how you handle all that. You know, that's, that's my concern, uh, which I've stated before, not to be redundant, but, you know, commissioners need to speak up, how they wanna deal with this issue.
I want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Since we do have another meeting on the fifteenth, that'll be before, I'm sure the legislature doesn't start till February, correct?
March.
March, okay, is, is it a conversation maybe we need to have with the superintendent's office to see, you know, if there's somebody we can say, look, we're moving this way, but we need this, this sparsity funding? I mean, is that a conversation we need to have before we make a decision?
That's a conversation that needs to be had with, not only superintendent, but it needs to be conveyed Senator Monford.
Yes.
And we don't know who our other person's gonna be yet, there'll be six weeks before we know who the House member's gonna be. But we can't sit here, because bills are introduced before the legislative sessions start. The bills are rolling, so I mean, we can't, we can't, can't put this off forever to make a decision.
I don't know what different Waukulla County's gonna do than we do it. I mean, Alan and Cheryl's been on top of stuff for twenty years down there. Every time they called, y'all there.
Well, the difference is, I think Waukulla County's gonna be satisfied to say, you, you want this fixed, here, here's the assessment.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's a, you know, that's a, I don't, that's not a decision for the board, that's a decision for the residents down there, and quite frankly, you know, I'd like to say I'd like to hear from some of the residents, but, you know, I think they've made their statement, uh, you know.
Well, I, I mean, I.
I keep hearing statements about, we pay taxes too, well, don't we all? Pay for the sheriff, we pay for the clerk, we pay for the property praiser, we pay for the tax collector, we pay for mosquito control, we pay all this other stuff with the tax dollars that are submitted by Alligator Point residents. They're saying they're not getting services for that, but it ain't like we take their tax money and set aside for just programs for Alligator Point. We have to fund the whole county with this, road department, solid waste, all, yeah, we all pay taxes, but none of the money is set aside, this much for Appalachian, this much for East Point, and this much for Carol Bay. No, it all goes to fund the county services that, that are essential to everyday life, whether you wanna buy a tag, or you wanna buy a property, or, or the services that the clerk provides, I mean, yeah, we all pay taxes, but none of it is set aside for a specific geographical location to fix this road, and, and if we went up on our millage rate to say, well, we need three million dollars for Alligator Point, there you go, you, you've maxed out your, your millage rate, what I, what I keep preaching about, and then you, you're broke as a county. I mean, it don't work that way. We all pay taxes, but it's all spread across all the services that the county provides. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, you know, we, we went and, we got this consultant now, I went down there twice, and as a result of that, and Alan, that's where this consultant came from, I told the people we need more resources, the county does not have the people to know how to access all this money to fix that road and fix it the right way. People in Alligator Point can't vote for me, but I went down there, took my time and went down there to try to help fix this problem, but then I get blasted in a, in a full-page ad that I ain't doing nothing, that I downgrade the people of Alligator Point. I ain't never downgraded nobody. I've only tried to do what I could do with the limited resources that we have, and to be blasted week after week in Tallahassee, and then the people in Tallahassee start calling me, these people are blasting us too. Well, the, the legislature won't let you go up so much on your millage rate if you don't have four-fifths majority of the, of the county commission, so there are limitations in your ability to raise money, and then, you know, I don't really wanna raise that kinda money anyway, because we're gonna sit here and be broke, and then we're gonna get blasted because the county's not being physically responsible. So I don't know how to help these people. I mean, I've done what I could do as a commissioner, as a chairman of the board, when I was a chairman, I don't know what else to do.
Eleven million dollars been spent over the last, about sixteen years?
Yeah, a little longer than that, but yeah, it's been a lot of money, public dollars. Now, people say, it's not tax dollars, well, it doesn't matter, it's public dollars invested in part of the community.
And it's on behalf of how hard this board's tried to work to fix the problem, and we can't change Mother Nature, we can't change the wind patterns, we can't change the road that's being washed out, I mean, Mother Nature takes sand away, and twenty years later, it may put it back, and then again, it may not, who knows? We couldn't control Hurricane Michael, and we can't control that down there. So I mean, I, I don't know how to help the people, I mean, I, I really don't.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The people have spoken, they now have a representative, an individual who's there, accountable, present, accessible and involved. This has taken decades for this to happen, and that's point number one, which has just happened in the last several weeks. This, representing District Two and living where I do at Alligator Point, I am there now, for the first time in over twenty years, to actually flesh and blood represent the people, not only of our entire county and our district, but specifically there at Alligator Point. And I believe that much of the answer that has been longed for in this presentation today is happening. The second issue is, is that we now have traction with that intergovernmental agency headed by Frank McLoom and, and motivated by the governor's office with those state and federal people, we now have traction. The train is now moving, it will be slow, but for the first time in history, on that road, we now have our teeth into this thing. And my opinion is, is that, that the research is appropriate to do, if, if the folks at Alligator Point wish to, to do the research. However, I believe at this point, it's very disruptive to change governance in any way, it's gonna confuse everybody. Mr. Monford's gonna be confused. Waukulla County isn't even here this morning to talk about this issue, by the way, and it feels, it just seems to me that, uh, it's very premature. I think getting the data and the interest, you know, that type of thing is appropriate, but stop at that point because we now have traction, let's give this thing a year and keep good data on where we are and talk about it in a year, and don't do a thing, because many of the things wished for are now happening. Just think of some of the issues that I looked at in a research paper about how potentially disruptive this can be for, for governance. Just how does Waukulla County plan on providing services for the, the folks that are to be annexed? This capital infrastructure for all the projects that we have could be changed. We've got so many activities that are going on that could be stirred up by all of these governance issues. Absolumen tax changes, impact fee structure changes, service fees, water, wastewater, drainage improvement scheduled in the current capital improvement area, all of this stuff can be disrupted by these kinds of annex issues that we're talking about. We don't wanna monkey with this right now. I'd say stop, look, listen, let's see how it goes for the next year. Don't do any annexing.
Yeah, because if you annexed today, you wouldn't be a commissioner in a month or two, 'cause it's gone your district, you're gonna be after your uncle Waukulla.
Well, this is for all the people, not just for me and District Two or where I would go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Point of clarification, I think the, the problem is not gonna be whether we decide to do anything or don't, I think that, as I understand it, the question that was posed from Senator Monford was, do we stand in opposition to it, or are we okay with it? What they do at the legislature, we're not gonna control. We can, we can sit here and sit on our hands and say, no, we're good, we're gonna wait another year, that don't mean they're not gonna reduce the bill.
That's correct.
I mean, they're giving us one shot to say whether we're, we can say three things, yes, we're for it, no, we're against it, number three, we're not opposed to it, right? That's the three options we have. But we don't need to not say nothing, 'cause that doesn't mean it's gonna slow Senator Monford or anybody else down at all, doesn't mean, and by the way, just point of clarification, Waukulla's millage rate is eight, eight point zero zero.
Well, I can tell you at the moment, I'm not far, I can find out more stuff on it, because I'm not gonna do like Commissioner Paris said, put the county in, have them raise taxes and, and that, 'cause the clerk just told us we, what we're standing on right now, it's not much of nothing. 'Cause I feel like the county has helped them people. I mean, since I've been here, I know what we done. We tried everything we could do.
But it's not enough.
It's not enough, we've done everything, we've had workers down there two or three weeks straight, didn't even have a dump truck running nowhere, helps in the county but Alligator Point.
I love that.
Had stuff washed out on this side of town and couldn't even get it fixed.
Well, I think we should clearly communicate with Senator Monford, and I, on, on our position, and I, our position should be qualified that we stand by right now for a year, we're opposed at this time only, at this time only, and we're gonna, we're not gonna go forward, we'll talk to you in a year, or the people will talk with us. And send that letter, return receipt, requested certified, make sure he hears it. We all sign it.
We, we cannot assure that that's gonna happen, because there are a lot of different legislative members.
Sure, agreed. I just didn't want us to be silent.
Other people could support the bill, move it forward.
Sure.
And, and they might, who knows?
Alan, did you talk to any of the commissioners out of Waukulla County?
No, I only talked to Dave Edwards, the county, county administrator.
I talked to two, but they've just been, uh, you know, curious, no substantial conversation.
And county staff needs to make the school board aware of this, where they can deal with Senator Monford on their own, they are their own taxing authority, they, you know, they have their own legislative bodies, it's kinda like the county commission and school board, and the superintendent takes care of all that, they need to be aware of this, and then they need to have communication with Monford. Should this proceed forward, are, how are they going to replace the funding for that school? That's not something to be done at the board's level, they, they got their own board to take care of that kinda stuff, but we do need to make them aware of that.
I will, sir.
And there was some mention of waiting a couple of weeks to see.
I didn't know that was an option, that's why I was.
Is Commissioner, Commissioner Bolt's making a, a statement in the form of a motion, or you're, you got a motion on the, if you're doing that, Commissioner Bolt, I don't know if you.
I'm making that motion, but I, I need to be careful that I'm not, um, in a conflict of interest here, I live there.
Well.
But I, but I'm, I certainly one of the most knowledgeable people on this dais about the issue in order to support that motion.
But I, I'd like to know as a commissioner, if they wanna move forward, if the people of Alligator Point wanna move forward with the annexation, then why should we keep beating our head against the wall trying to fix this road?
We don't have all the people, all we have is the research right now, if we have, that's all that.
I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna continue this on for another year, if a year we get halfway started on this road in Franklin County, and now all of a sudden they wanna become Waukulla County, then you're in the middle of trying to fix this road, and we don't know who's, who's doing what.
None, we don't know that answer, the people aren't here to tell us.
I understand, but the people were there to write, to write the, um, article in Tallahassee and got the ball rolling, they were there for that, so I, I don't know what to tell you, but, you know, I don't wanna get caught in the middle of halfway, you know, working three years, we've finally got, you know, the state to hire a consultant to fix this road, and you get, you know, a year into it, and then boom, now we still wanna be with Waukulla County, then where's that put this county?
Right.
You know, where, where does that put us?
According to the one of the commissioners out of Waukulla, they want the road fixed before they take it.
I ain't doing all that.
That's what I'm saying, I, I, I was told.
Why wait, why beat your head against the wall to fix the road when the people want out? I mean, I, I don't know what the people want, but I, I know.
I was gonna say, we need to talk to somebody.
I know they wrote in articles, and I know how degrading they've been to the commission and everything else, and, and I hear comments this morning about this commission not reacting or making derogatory comments about the people of Alligator Point, I ain't never made a derogatory comment about nobody down there. All I've ever tried to do is help, but if it's not enough, it's not enough. I mean, what, what do you want, what are we supposed to do?
We have so many questions, what we do is we do our best at the time, which would, we, we, we as a county commission, keep our head down and look at the major issues of our healthcare and our development and, and our budget and this Hurricane Michael issue, the rest of this has been disruptive and spin, it's still spinning up here, and we have nothing to go on. I would say, uh, perhaps we have a, and Michael, you'll help to help me on the wording, a letter stating some sentiment that we as a county commission really don't have anything to go on about what the will of the people are, and, uh, we have, we have so many more missions to go on.
I would like to clarify just one thing, uh, and I'm only speaking for myself, I'm only one of four today.[1726.61] Uh, I've only been doing this for a couple of years, but I can tell you, every issue we've had, anybody that's had an issue has not been slack about sending me email, finding me at Napa, chasing me down, calling my phone, 'cause my cell phone's out there, and that's fine, that's the way it needs to be, I try to be as transparent as I can be. There has been absolutely nothing sent to me from anybody at Alligator Point, and I know they know about this issue. So apparently, they're good with it, that's all I'm saying, they have nothing to say, they all know how to contact every one of us. Uh, you know, I, all I can go by is what I've experienced in my first two years. And this thing always stays lit up, and my wife's constantly telling me to put it up, because I'm answering emails, so. I just don't know how, how you, I mean, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Bolt, I'm not being disagreeable with you, I'm trying to add some in addition to. I do believe that the people have put forward what they want, because we got senators calling our commissioners, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Um, Commissioner Bolt, I'll be glad to help draft a letter, but I still need first some instructions from the board on, on what the board's wishes are. Uh, you don't have a full board today, so it, you may want to defer this decision for another two weeks until your next meeting, as Commissioner Jones had mentioned earlier. Because I don't think that you necessarily have a deadline that you're going to fail to, to meet between now and your next board meeting. And you can even have Mike or the Commissioner Parrish get in touch with Senator Monford and let him know that the board has deferred this action until you have a full board at your next board meeting, and then you will be taking action. That's one suggested route of moving forward this morning.
All it's gonna be is a book of recommendation, I mean, we're for, we're against, we neutral, I mean, that, that don't mean it's gonna change the outcome.
No.
That doesn't mean it's gonna change the outcome.
No, sir, but if I heard Allen's presentation correctly, what Senator Monford said was, he won't, is, does Franklin County want him to move forward? What I read into that is if we say no, then he's not gonna file the bill.
Well, that's basically what he said, but I couldn't give him that answer, yeah, that's basically what he said, but I couldn't give him the answer, 'cause I'm not.
Right.
And I told him I had to come back to this board, and this board had to make a decision, 'cause that's not my decision to be made. But he did reach out, and at some point, we're gonna have to reach back to him and let him know how we feel, know whether that turns anything, or, I don't know. He may not even be wanting to do it, somebody else may do it, but we don't know who our new house member's gonna be, uh. I don't know, what, what, what am I, what, what's the agenda, Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes, sir.
What, what's the agenda looking like for next two weeks, Mike?
Well, next two weeks is always a busy one, where you're planning and zoning a board of adjustment, I'm, I'm not sure if we have any other, anyone else on it as yet, I'll have to go look. We have something for the airport.
Could be, could be, you got a presentation on the airport, you could, you could, I'm not sure yet.
But if we're gonna turn it over, if we're gonna do that, we should not sink no more money into that road that we got coming forward.
That's what I'm saying.
If we can use it on this side of the county, if Waukulla wants to get it, 'cause the commissioner told me that they wanted that road fixed before they took it, they was not taking that road to, and sink three, four million dollars in it. 'Cause they said, we know it's gonna get washed out within the next high tides. And he, he, if he would come and speak it, he said, they gonna raise their taxes, they gonna pay garbage, everything they got in Waukulla, they gonna pay. If they want us to raise them up down there like that here, we can raise it up and fix them to, to get it a road tax and whatever.
Yeah, I'm out.
I make a motion that we oppose any annexation to Waukulla County. Because you can see already, if we make, if, if, if we start in the other direction, uh, all things stop on that road suddenly. And that's not fair to the people, we are a county government, we've got decades and decades of governmental experience here, and we need to keep pressing on with the business of the people.
What do you think, do we, should we should sink four thousand dollars, four million dollars in, turn and give it to Waukulla, and within, in six, eight months?
This is so speculative right now, Waukulla is not even here today.
That's what I'm saying, it's nobody.
I, 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 we take charge of our own government, we take, we take care of our road, just as we have done for thirty years. And remember, we now have a, uh, a, a governor-appointed task force that's working, state and federal, to start solutions on that road long-term.
Something we've never had.
That's right.
Something we've never had.
And I think we need to, we need to harbor that and, and work with that now. And, and not, um, confuse the whole picture by doing anything but saying we are opposed of Waukulla County taking over Ballpoint, Alligator Point.
I might, Mr. Parrish, Mr. Parrish, I've never said one bad thing about them people down there, never. I don't even know but one person down there, and that's Allen, that's all I know off Alligator Point. How can I say something bad about them?
We're all great down there.
Yeah, we're all great people, ever, I mean, I never said a bad thing about nobody.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, uh, the board does not have to wait, obviously, you've got a majority here, you've got a court, you can act today if you wanted to. But the point of order was, your first motion, Commissioner Bolt, was to oppose the annexation of Alligator Point to Waukulla County for now, and then research it and address it a year later, are you modifying that now to just simply an opposition to annexation without condition?
I'm modifying that now as a complete opposition for annexation.
Yes, sir, thank you, Commissioner.
I know in the future, we can do research on this again. Give us a year.
I have a motion on the floor, I got a second. I got a motion on the floor, I got a second.
Got a motion?
Uh, discussion.
Yes, sir, any discussion?
I don't know if it's proper, but I think we need to have a public hearing on the issue to hear from the people of Alligator Point.
There you go.
If our agenda's gonna be full at the next meeting, Michael, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but at one o'clock or one-thirty that evening, have the people of Alligator Point come here and tell us how they feel. After they've heard, and some of the people here have heard what we've had to say here today, they can spread the word about what was said, why it was said, provide some information. And if they come here, still want to annex, I wanna hear from the public. And I'll cast my vote accordingly, I think that's the proper thing to do, without taking it, without making a, a rash to see. Is that kinda the way you were leaning a while ago?
Yes, sir, can I ask you something else?
I mean, I'm not making a motion, we have a motion on the floor, I'm just putting out sentiment.
I'd like to have a, a, one of the commissioners from Waukulla County at that meeting to see how they feel, I mean, what, you know what I'm saying?
We can invite them, I mean, it's an obligation to show up.
I don't think, I don't think that's a good idea, will you?
Well, they gonna take it over.
'Cause they're, well, but they, yep.
Yeah, I don't think they'd show up.
Okay.
They probably want us to make a decision before they decide how they wanna react.
That's correct.
Well, that's exactly what.
That's correct, and I don't wanna make a decision without hearing from the people, 'cause if they come here and tell me that's what they want, after learning everything they've learned today, I don't wanna wait to next year and hear, have them come in here and tell me the same thing. I'm ready to move forward, move backwards, whatever the people want, but I'm not gonna sit here and wait to take a vote and all that. I can take and listen to however many people show up, and, you know, we get a live, uh, accounting of exactly, you know, where we going and where, where we been, but, uh, and I know Commissioner Bolt has amended it to say that we're opposed to annexation, but, you know, I don't wanna oppose, I don't wanna oppose this thing too much if people, if that's what they want. I mean, if that's what they want, and we don't allow them to annex, and they're gonna be here at every meeting with the same old story, downgrading the commission, you don't help us, you don't do nothing for us, you tax us, but you don't give us nothing, it's gonna be the same old thing, but it's gonna be even worse. It's gonna be every meeting, we're gonna have to hear this. I mean, and I'm not into hearing this for the next four years.
Well, I go along with you on that, we'll get it done as fast as the next meeting, and if, if that's what they want, we'll shut down.
But we have a motion on the floor.
I didn't have a second, I ain't got a second.
My, my motion was based on a, a feeling of being isolated, without the, you know, the full hearing of the people. So now that we have that forum coming up, I'll withdraw the motion and let's get more educated.
Okay.
Is there a motion for a public hearing?
I may, I'll make the motion as I just described, Michael, if we're too busy in the morning to do it, if it's up, the will of the commission, at one-thirty that evening, we'll have a public hearing here and listen to the people of Alligator Point.
Sure.
And, and if that's what they want, then we'll just have to figure it out, but I'm only one vote here, and you've got a whole board here. I wanna hear what the people of Alligator Point have got to say.
There you go.
I'm with you.
And we'll go from there, but at some point, we have to make, give the senator a recommendation, let the people know how we feel. And, and, you know, the legislative session's coming up, if we sit here and don't say anything, then, then who knows what's gonna happen? We don't know, they don't know, you know, and I just don't feel like that's the right way to proceed.
We'll go along like you said, and we'll know, then we won't have to, if they're on it, they won't have to sink no more money into it down there and how to wind it up.
I'm gonna make sure y'all heard I did second.
Yes.
I have a motion second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, yes, sir.
Just, uh, as, speaking as the president of the Alligator Point St. Teresa Association, it's so far from Alligator Point for people to come over here, I can get everybody the word, but you'll probably get maybe five people. I would suggest that you would allow us to send out the word and have a public meeting, and let our commissioner attend the meeting, and let, then we'd get fifty or a hundred people to talk about what they want. But what you're suggesting, I can't get people to drive over here, eighty-five miles to come and talk to you.
I don't know what to tell them, last time I went down there, they raised so much sand, I said, I wouldn't go back without a deputy there.
I understand that.
And I ain't going back without a deputy there.
I understand that.
Not to talk to the people, because some of them people are radical.
You're right about that.
Were very disrespectful.
Yes, sir.
That was at the little church right there, where we always had meetings, I said, I ain't going back.
I understand that.
And I ain't going back.
I understand that.
Unless there's a deputy there to control the crowd, I'm not gonna sit there and be badgered and disrespected and all, I'm not going.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
But if he goes, I don't get to send him another people, I don't get to look at him in the face and look at him, look at him in the eye.
Well, I'm just saying, I can't get them to come here, sir, they'll scream, and they'll write letters to Tallahassee and all that, but they won't drive eighty miles to.
That, that'll be their option, sir. This is the annex for the board of county commissioners, and if they don't wanna come and express their opinions, then what am I supposed to do? I'm inviting them, I'm willing to listen to them, but I ain't going to Alligator Point.
Well, thank you for your time, sir, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna remind us that we're a full board for all the people.
And I wanna hear from them.
I do too.
If they won't come, I don't know what to tell them.
Seems to me that we oughta go there, all five of us oughta attend to.
I ain't going back down there the way they treated me last time I was down there, I'm telling you.
We, we have had some sophisticated, um, meeting moderator, moderator that did a very good job and facilitated a, a very contentious issue, and it came out with good issues, so perhaps we can sophisticate this meeting. So that, uh, all of us can be there as a county commissioner hearing what our, our people want to hear.
You ain't been through what I've been through, I ain't going back down there. They ain't gonna talk to me any kinda way and expect me to either, I ain't, I ain't going back down there. If they wanna come here, I'll sit here and listen to them and give them every consideration, but I ain't going back down there.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to vote.
We already did.
We voted for them to come here, if they don't show up.
We've invited them.
So a public hearing at one-thirty, is that what we set, we set at one-thirty, okay.
Yeah, one-thirty.
I send my report.
All right, anybody got anything for Allen?
Got enough to have a chat. Do you want to move to the last?
Um, got the attorney, you got anything?
No report from the county attorney for the first meeting in January, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, any commissioner comment?
I wanna wish everybody Happy New Years and Prosperous New Year.
Me too, any commissioner comments?
Best wishes for the entire year for everybody.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. Um, many, many people in this room might not watch Franklin County Athletics, but this Friday will be one you don't wanna miss. St. Joe and Franklin County are both undefeated in district play, and somebody's gotta lose.
Where they playing?
Friday night in East Point.
East Point, okay.
Seven-thirty.
All right.
Yes, JV's at five, girls at six, and Varson at seven-thirty.
So if you wanna get a seat, don't show up at seven-thirty.
Don't show up at seven-thirty, you won't get a seat now.
Meeting adjourned.